Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Monday, August 4th, 2025. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Novak.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. Why don't we adopt this evening's agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion by Carlson, second by Butler to adopt the agenda. Any corrections or changes? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. We're looking for approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Butler to approve the minutes of the July 15th, 2025 meeting. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries one abstention, Councilmember Armstrong. We have seven items on our consent agenda this evening. The first one is to approve a temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license to the Coon Rapids North Star Alliance for the military softball tournament at Sand Creek Park. The appropriate fees have been paid, the background investigation is being completed, and the certificate of insurance for liquor liability has been ordered. And the temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license will be valid from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. from September 12th through September 14th, 2025. Approval of the temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license is contingent upon a successful background investigation and the submittal of a valid certificate of insurance for liquor liability. So we're looking to approve a temporary strong beer and wine liquor license for Coon Rapids North Star Alliance for use at a military softball tournament to be located at Sand Creek Park, 1008 Northdale Boulevard on September 12th, 13th, and 14th, 2025, contingent upon a successful background investigation and submittal of a valid certificate of insurance for liquor liability. Excuse me. The next item on our consent agenda is to receive the schedule of electronic payments. This happens at every meeting. Staff has prepared the attached list of electronic payments processed since the last council meeting, so we're looking to receive the schedule of electronic payments from July 10th, 2025 through July 30th, 2025. Next item on our consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 25-87, accepting a crime victim services grant. The Minnesota Department of Public Safety, Office of Justice Programs sought proposals from county and city attorney offices to fund a victim witness advocate position. This position provides services to crime victims, ensuring crime victim rights are upheld and increasing victim's safety and access to services that meet their needs. The city's attorney's office was first awarded the grant in October of 2017 and has since been awarded additional grants to support this position. The funding enhances, not replaces, existing services for crime victims by having the victim service staff be in court with an attorney to improve victim contact. Further, the funding helps the city attorney's office meet statutory requirements by enhancing information or referrals for victims and providing victims with greater assistance and advocacy. The victim services staff member is under the supervision of the city attorney. Under the proposal, state and federal funding is available to directly service the needs of crime victims. The grant will provide $70,000 for one year, beginning October 2025. I would have loved to have truncated that a little bit, but it was not really interesting, so I just read the whole thing. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 25-87 to accept the crime victim service grant from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety, Office of Justice Programs, and to authorize execution of the agreement. Next item on our consent agenda is to approve the agreement with Anoka Ramsey Community College for a security contract. The contract between the city and the state of Minnesota is reviewed and renewed each year, roughly following the state's fiscal calendar in a typical school year. The current contract expires on August 31st, 2025, and the new contract reflects a total contract amount not to exceed $39,295 and will be effective from August 1st, 2025 to August 1st, 2026, and the total reflects a 4% increase over the previous year. So we're looking to authorize the mayor and the city manager to enter into an agreement with the state of Minnesota and Anoka Ramsey Community College to provide security services for 2025, 2026. Next item on our consent agenda is to receive the mid-year gambling expenditure report. The staff has received and reviewed the semi-annual reports for January 1st through June 30th, showing gambling expenditures within the city of Coon Rapids and trade area for the six organizations at 16 locations, and the combined net profit this period was reported at $971,191.43, with expenditures within the trade area, which includes Coon Rapids, reported at $852,831.36. We're looking to officially receive the gambling expenditure report for the first half of Next item on our consent agenda, we're getting close, there's only two items left, is in planning case 24-23, approve the site plan extension for Tronson Reserve, 1354 121st Avenue, Palmer Architects Limited. And Palmer Architects were granted site approval for this on August 15th, 2024, and we're looking to extend it. At its meeting on July 17th, 2025, the planning commission voted to recommend to the city council approval of the requested site plan extension. So we're looking in planning case 24-23, the city council will to approve a one-year extension of the site plan approval to August 16th, 2026. And our next item, and the last item on our consent agenda, is to approve the final payment to Northwest Asphalt Incorporated for Project 25-2, which was a full-depth reclamation. It was several streets in town, it was about a mile and a half of reconstruction, and we're looking at, the amount due is $57,786.65, and that was on about a $538,000 project. So we're looking to approve the change order and final payment to Northwest Asphalt Incorporated in the amount of $57,786.65 for Project 25-2 Full Depth Reclamation.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Novak.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Novak and a second by Carlson. Is there questions? Discussion?
I think you said it nicely.
Wow. All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the consent agenda is adopted. We are up to item nine, consider a request by Shannon Clear Pizza Grill to reduce false alarm fees. And I see Mr. Heil is here. Do you want me to just, should I just hit the highlights of this, do you think?
Mayor, that would be fine.
All right, I'll hit the highlights, and if you think we missed something, you just come up, or if anybody has any questions. False alarm responses to businesses are tracked on an annual basis. After a third false alarm response in a calendar year, the business is provided with notice that fees will be incurred for additional false alarm responses, and responses four to five result in a $70 occurrence charge, six to nine result in $125 per occurrence, and ten and more result in a $260 per occurrence charge. In December of '24, Shannon Clear Pizza Grill began to have some issues with their security system, which resulted in nine false alarm responses by the police department. The police department spoke with Shannon Clear about the issue and provided them with some flexibility on the fees they had incurred as they were working toward a solution, but they were charged $610 based on the city's fee schedule. The issues persisted in 2025, and there have been 20 false alarm responses to Shannon Clear, resulting in $3,500 in charges. The issue with their security system has, I'm going to put in the word finally, has been resolved, finally, and the city hasn't responded to a false alarm call since the end of May. Shannon Clear is just seeking some relief on their bill as it has created a significant financial burden for them. They approached the mayor about the issue and stated they would be willing to pay for each response, but asked that the recurrence fee be capped at $125. This would result in a total charge of $2,015, and the city council will need or would need to approve any change or reduction to the fees that Shannon Clear has incurred as this fee is established by the city council resolution. So we have a few choices. We can uphold the fees incurred of $3,500. We can approve Shannon Clear's request, which would cap their fees at $125 per occurrence, resulting in a total bill of $2,015. And consider, or three, consider an alternative, such as a different fee reduction scenario or referring the issue to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. Now, before I even open this up to council, now I'll ask Mr. Heil, do you have any, anything you want to add to that? If you do, just come on up to the mic and give us your name, and feel free, and then you can wait there in case anybody has any questions.
Okay. Welcome. My name's Dale Healy, I'm the partner of Shannon Clear Pizza Grill, and I've done business in the city of Coon Rapids for 30 years, and up until December of last year, I've never had any issue like this. And we sort of had a perfect storm of things that happened beginning last December, and they actually continued until this morning. I didn't want to correct the mayor, but we thought we had everything resolved, and a service that we had discontinued more than a month ago, one of the employees came in and again set off the alarm just this morning, and so we dealt with that today. We believed that to have been the last issue that we had. It's just been, it's been a tough, tough last 12 months, and it's kind of a burden. I mean, it's been a little bit difficult, a business climate in the last 12 months, and that's not the council's problem or the citizens of Coon Rapids or the police department for that matter, but it's been a little difficult, and we're just seeking a little bit of relief. We're working diligently to get this solved. We believed we had it solved up to a month ago and found out that we didn't. Today, I had a conversation with the company. We, I think, have a resolution right now, but it seems that something crazy seems to come out of nowhere, but I'm just asking for a little relief on this. I believe we should pay something, and I'm willing to pay the entire thing. I'm just hoping that our history of 30 years operating in Coon Rapids would be considered.
Thank you. So you said your former, so did you terminate with that alarm company, or what?
The first issue we had was with the alarm company, and we didn't end up terminating because they believed they had resolved the issue with some faulty, the second faulty sensor that they thought it was. So they fixed the faulty sensor, and so at that point, we thought we had it taken care of. Then it was getting tripped by a vendor that was using an old code, a necessary vendor, and I couldn't pinpoint it because we had multiple vendors, and they come in generally between 5:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m. before any of us are there, and somebody did something to sabotage our camera system. The back four cameras were not operable. That's getting rectified this Thursday, but I wasn't able to see who was tripping it. So that happened, and then we had a supply, or a cleaning company that came in and they switched cleaning, they switched crews, and the new crew knew the key but didn't know the code. And so they were coming in, but we didn't know it was them or a vendor tripping it, and we couldn't see with the camera. And then an additional cleaning company that I terminated the contract with, I thought a month ago, an employee for that company came in to clean today because somebody from their company didn't communicate that the contract was terminated. So they came in, the alarm was going off, and they just went about cleaning with the alarm going off. I've never seen anything like what I've seen in the last eight months with this, but I think we've got it resolved.
Councilmember Carlson, I cut you off, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry. So Mr. Healy, I just want to, so I just want to clarify that the first ones were, there's a sensor, and then, and sounds like vendor issue, supplier issues?
Yeah, and what, what happens is these vendors, so they're, they're going through a lot of employees, like our food companies and such, the cleaning companies, so they get new employees all the time, and communication breakdowns have been more prevalent in the last 12 months than I've ever seen. I mean, typically, you deal with a company like Cintas, they're solid and their communications are good, and you see a lot of the same people coming in and out. In the last 12 months, it's not that way, so different people will come in and out, they have supervisor changes, people aren't communicating, code changes, and it's just been, to the point where we were going to disable the security system and just not have one, except for we have alcohol on site, and so it's just, we thought better of that, but, you know.
Not the best.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you feel like you have a nail down machine?
I, I am as confident as I can be knowing that it just happened today after I told the mayor a month ago that I felt like we had it nailed down, but this, I think we've ruled out everything, and my camera system's fixed as of this Thursday, so.
Has there been anything from the inside of the business, like, you know, sometimes if you have like posters or things that move around when the air conditioning kicks on or the heater kicks on, has there been any of those, moving blinds, anything like that?
That's what we think the initial several were, and we believed it to be that, and there were some Christmas decorations and some things that were up there, and so when the air system went on, it was, it was moving that around. So then we got rid of that motion sensor in that area because we had to have the Christmas decorations up, and then it continued into January and February, and the security company assured us that everything was in order. Well, we had them come out again, we had a different tech come out. I talked to a manager when I threatened to cancel the service, and he came out with a tech, and they dialed in on the problem, I think that was about April, and they said, nope, we found a bad sensor, that was your issue. And they volunteered to pay for up to $900 of our expense because they know that they were at fault for some of it. And so that, that's when we thought we had it there, but then we had another vendor issue, and then we had the cleaning company issue, and, but as of right now, I am near certain that we've got it dialed in. I mean, once or twice a year, I expect that to happen, but to be this level of burden to the police department, it's not right, but.
Your Honor.
Councilman Novak.
Would you entertain a motion?
I would.
Let me just say beforehand, I've worked in the security industry for 15 years, man. I've seen that type of thing happen before, and when it happens, it just seems to cascade down like a waterfall. I feel for you. I don't believe that these laws were put in place to be punitive when the merchant is making a good faith effort to try and keep it from happening. So, Your Honor, I would move that we approve Shannon Clear's request, which would cap their fees at $125 per occurrence, resulting in a total bill of 2015.
Second.
We have a motion by Novak and a second by Carlson.
Mr. Mayor.
Further discussion? Let's, Councilman Butler.
Yeah, I, I really thank you, Mr. Heil, for being here today. I appreciate this extra context, and I know we all got some context via email about this too. I would not support this current motion as it is, and I don't think it's because you've done anything wrong, you're doing the best you can, and I appreciate the upfront honesty that there's still problems even today, but I do think that if we're going to give them a 43% discount on their fees, we should consider sending this to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals first. I would even be open to looking at reducing our fee schedule because I can appreciate the difference of going from $125 to $260 per occurrence, but I think it's a little too on the fly for us to knock off 43% of the bill, and I appreciate how much work you're doing and the thoughts everyone else has, but I'm not comfortable just doing this without further review.
Okay. Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Geisler.
Like Mr. Butler, but for totally different reasons. I look at this from a precedent perspective. We have our fee structure put in place for a reason. You know, our citizens can appeal to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. The structure is the way it is. I'm not comfortable with just straight up reducing it as a decision, but I would, I do agree that some grace could be offered, whether it's a longer payment term, whether it's a stepped payment plan, or putting it on an assessment, or something else to make it not so instantaneous. I'd be more interested in that type of adjustment than a straight fee cap. My second question is this, is as we've had another one this morning, is this one this morning another $125 or is it $260? What would the council be thinking about that? What about future occurrences? To me, this has nothing to do specifically with Shannon Clear, and it's a policy discussion point. I believe that Shannon Clear has done what they can to try to mitigate this, which is why I think we should consider some level of grace or consideration. I would be more in tune with what Councilmember Butler had said, is sending it to the adjustments and appeals for kind of a second process of like we do with regular citizen requests to reduce their fees or administrative fines. Understanding, though, that they don't really have a playbook for this, that's kind of a hard ask, so I do think that it is with us, but I struggle with just a straight discount on fees, and I would want to understand what, what was this morning's charge going to be, and what would future charges be? Would it be at $260? Would it be at $125? Are we capping $125? Are we comfortable with anyone else coming with this request in future times if that happens? Those are the things that I concern about with this. Again, not specific to Shannon Clear at all, I think you're a great business in the, in the community, but I would like to figure that part of the policy out before we decide.
Okay. I guess what I wanted to make sure was that we were covering the costs, and, and the officers show up and they file a report, and this, this is the step up, this isn't the maximum. I think we need to maintain that for people that are serial abusers of this. And I guess I just, it seemed like it was a fair, and I still support it, I think it's a fair way to reconcile this and let everybody get back to business, and I guess I assumed that that one this morning would be at $125 just because we capped their fees at $125 per occurrence, but for, for now.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Butler.
I have a question for the city manager on that. So if we did unfortunately have more, whether next week or next month, would the resolution as written cap it going forward, or would we potentially be getting this asked again if unfortunately we have like another five or six instances?
Yeah. Mayor, council, you may want the motioner to clarify the intent. As it's written, or as it was sort of anticipated by me, sort of relative to the total amount of fees that had been incurred before today, the cap would have, as is stated, would apply to those calls through yesterday, we'll say.
Okay.
So if it was the motioner's intent to apply that cap for the calendar year, for future occurrences, that would be good to understand, or if it was sort of effective through 8/3, or even today, then with this new one, knowing that it exists, or what the, the future would look like. I guess my thought was, we were sort of addressing calls to date, sounds like they've got most of their problems addressed, or might be a one-off, but then the default would be back to the fee schedule, so if they have a number 22 or 23, those would be at $260, but if there's a different intent, we should clarify.
Your Honor.
And that would have been my assumption, would be through today. Go ahead. Councilmember Novak.
The motioner's intent was to have the motion stand as is. If there was a fee that was put forward today, that would be on today's schedule, not the schedule from before. So anything going on forward would be for the $260.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Carlson.
Just to clarify, my second would be with that in mind as well.
Okay. Any further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
Just have a couple of questions for chief. Chief, I mean, this, this is a lot of, this is a lot of false alarms. Can you describe kind of the, basically, the amount of time it takes for our police department when they respond to a false alarm? A false alarm?
Well, Councilmember Carlson, the, the actual time in minutes isn't, isn't that much. The expense, I think I broke that down for somebody or took a shot at it based on CAD calls, times on those CAD calls. From my perspective, my biggest concern is the, you know, when there's so much redundancy, that complacency is, is a bigger concern for me, both for the businesses to get a prompt response and somebody that rolls up, you know, looking for something wrong, and then also from an officer's safety perspective, that they're arriving and not, you know, rolling their eyes saying another one, you know? And that's my biggest concern. It is a two-car call, so the other component to this is people, you know, your backup car at 2:00 in the morning could be coming from the opposite end of town, and that leaves that part of town, and whatever might happen there, kind of, kind of leaves them hanging over there, that part of town, so it's sort of an efficiency thing and an officer's safety thing, but again, it's not a, it's not a financial, you know, huge financial burden, you know, if you break it down to minutes, because you're talking about, you know, 15 minutes a call probably, and a few minutes writing a report, somebody reviewing it, and some administrative times.
And chief, calls are prioritized, right? So if you have a, an alarm call, which we know are, you know, 99 times out of 100, it's a false alarm, we don't know that when you're going, of course, but if you have an emergency call at the same time, the 911 dispatcher would start by prioritizing that call, and the officer would then prioritize as well, so it wouldn't necessarily be taking officers away from a high priority call like a heart attack or what have you?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Armstrong? Yeah, I just, I just, I've been in your situation before, we, a company that, that we have sensor issues, and it's kind of like you feel like when you go to the auto mechanic and you want them to check your vehicle, and it won't do what it's supposed to do for the mechanic to figure out what's going on, and so I can understand and appreciate where you're coming from. I also want to applaud you for coming forward with a resolution instead of just kind of kicking the can down the road and whatnot. I think that the 2015 is, is fair. I don't think this is anything that they're, they did intentionally, from, from his explanation, I think they did significant amount of work to try to solve the problem, and so, from my standpoint, I appreciate you coming forward, I appreciate you're, you're trying to find a resolution to it, and I think the 2015 is fair. All right. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
I would agree with a council member on that one, that 2015 is fair. I appreciate you coming in, tell us a little bit about the situation. I do also appreciate the other council members' comments about bringing it to the Board of Appeals and Adjustment, but I think if it went to the Board of Appeals and Adjustment, it's going to get appealed back to the council, and I think we would probably come to the same decision. It is a policy question, but we do have a business owner that's been in business in Coon Rapids for 30 years, and we really haven't had these problems. They've come together, they're working with us, and I would support lowering this down to 2015, capping the fee at $125 for the next month until they get this figured out.
Okay, don't, now don't confuse our motion. Our motion was through today.
Through today, I would be happy through today, because it's going to get worked out.
Councilmember Geisler.
I understand. So, to clarify on that, the, the motion was to include the charge from today.
No.
Not to include the charge from today.
Correct.
So today's charge would be at the $260.
At $260.
Okay. Just, I wanted to clarify that, so we are approving basically yesterday back at $125 in occurrence, and then the regular fee schedule applies from today, this morning forward.
Correct.
Okay. I misunderstood, sorry about that.
That's, that's why I wanted to clarify, appreciate it, thank you.
All right. So is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The motion carries two nays, councilmembers Geisler and Butler. Mr. Healy, thank you, and I'm sorry I was mispronouncing your name.
That's all right. Council, I appreciate the consideration and thank you very much, and I understand your point about precedence. I normally would agree with you 100%, but.
Except what is not in your interest to. All right. Item 10. Figuring to see Mr. Seraus come running in the door from the studio, but you were watching over there in your desk, weren't you? We are, we are considering an agreement for city council chambers' technology upgrade.
Thank you, Your Honor, council. We are considering an upgrade to the council chambers' technology. We worked with two vendors over a period of time now. The two vendors are Forte, who is AVI Systems, up until about six months ago. AVI Systems is the original integrator of the equipment that's in here from 1996, when we first moved into City Hall. we first moved into City Hall. And the other vendor was Alpha and they've been probably our primary equipment vendor the last 15 years. They typically have the lowest prices. So both of them are very experienced in council chambers. The chambers, as in the memo, does not just our council meetings like today where we're broadcasting live and doing presentation work, but also when the city has training or other events in here, they use the AV system without hopefully IT help or CTN assistance. So with 15 years old, we're definitely due for an upgrade. And some of the upgrades, the large monitor above the mayor is a plasma, if you remember that term, yes. So that'll be replaced. It'd be slightly larger and a little lighter. I know the mayor was concerned at one point about that heavy TV above him, but it will be lighter. With the new resolution and higher quality technology, all the DAS monitors will be updated as well, so the signal will be a little cleaner, a little easier to read when there's presentations. We're also adding two 55-inch audience monitors in here. That helps us with open captioning if the need ever arises. CTN does live captioning. It's closed captioning to the public at home watching on cable, but here it would be open captions, so viewers in the audience could see, you know, there'll be a slight delay as we feed the signal over from CTN, but that's available. And if somebody was presenting and just needed the, to see the captions for assistance, that would be available. An add along the process was also for council to put a, well, we would say a confidence monitor, but if somebody was appearing to council or if we were doing a remote presentation, we'd have a monitor up not far from where the projector is located currently, so that you would be able to see either a council member or a presenter all the time in case you'd also see then their presentation in your monitor. So it helps in that aspect. Also, I mentioned the projector, that is also 15 years old. It's 3,000 lumens. The new one would be 7,000. It's a laser, so it'll be a much easier to read picture, plus when you have some lights on in here. When that is used, obviously the council is not here, there's a motorized screen above you that drops down in that mode. The screen and the motorized aspects of it, they work just fine, so we're leaving that, not replacing that. And interesting, we're replacing three audio amps in the control room that were actually part of the original building. Two of the three were, one we replaced out about 10 years ago. So that'll feed the sound system in here. And then, as I mentioned, much better picture. The current system right now works off of VGA and so everything will be digital in HDMI. And then another add that we put in in the last few months is our city's been switching a lot to Microsoft Teams in our technology, so all our conference rooms, as they get new technology, it's Microsoft Teams equipped, so it helps a lot better with staff to use the presentation system. And so we added that in to this system as well. And I, you see the differences in price below. We did ask both vendors just to kind of do their own proposals and then had the things I listed as requirements for the upgrade and what we were trying to do. And they did it two different ways. So like I said, they're two really good vendors, but you can see one is considerably less in their proposal. The other vendor had additional equipment, things like that, that are great. It's just a little bit more robust proposal than the other one. So with that, we are asking for approval to Forte. I will make one note, the contingency we're asking for is 10%. That number is correct in the spreadsheet, but actually at the end, it's $13,353.88. Somehow it dropped out. We've lost about $20 in the other two locations. My calculated was also from 1996, so we got rid of that. So I am replacing that as well. So with that, I will stand for any questions from...
Your honor.
All right. Councilmember Novak?
Quick question, actually. The quotes between the two are pretty wide in ranging there. Is there anything having to do with the Alpha quote and the more robust equipment that would make it last longer and have to take more time to replace, so to speak, than the Forte quote?
Good question. Hopefully we don't have to wait another 15 years for an upgrade, but they just, it's just different components and how they did it, how, there's a lot of distribution and conversion of signal. And so they did frame style with cards in it is part of it. And they did add extra, as the project, as we were going back and forth separately with the two vendors, we added on some things in the control room. And so they just did those differently. So not really, not, nothing that would really help us, especially with that large of a difference in price.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Strauss? Councilmember Geisler?
Mr. Strauss, I know one of the comments we get every now and then is the audience audio is a little rough in the chamber at times. This will address that?
Yes, that is our goal, councilmember Geisler. The speakers will stay the same, there'll be new amps, and when they do the system, they will rebalance. There's some auto mixing that goes on and that is part of what that issue is. And so rather than having them come out for four or five grand, we're going to do it all at one time, which brings up the timing. We're trying to complete this by the end of the year. I am hopeful if council passes tonight, we would see if there was any way there's kind of a gap in the end of October. But that, that's, you know, getting all the equipment and everything lined up, so, but that's kind of my wish time period.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Strauss?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Butler?
I move that city council approve the contract with Forte in the amount of $133,538.72 for the 2025 city chambers' technology upgrade project and approve a 10% contingency allowance of an additional $13,353.88.
Second?
Motion by Butler and a second by Novak. And you got your extra 20 bucks in there, too. Saw that.
I was really nervous.
Hopefully we don't need that. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Griszkowiak?
I think this makes sense. This was in our 2025 budget. This is a pretty old technology. We use this room a lot and there's a lot of stuff going on in here and I for one, there's a lot of times where my monitor, it doesn't work at all. And there's other times where a presenter is presenting and I'm trying to look up there because, you know, I'm not seeing what they're seeing. So I think we're even past due on this thing. We're on budget, so I support it fully.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson?
Yeah, that's a nice bid. $50,000, that's a nice bid. And we work with both, so we're confident with Forte as well. Excellent.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Strauss.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11 is to consider an introduction of an ordinance restricting parking on 89th Avenue. Mr. Hamer, you want to hit that one?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, council. This is just the first step in the process, this is the introduction. We received some resident concerns, we've had some concerns with some snow plowing in the area. The busing route over to Adams Elementary School, you've kind of got a skewed intersection there on a curve, you got a traffic signal in there. The road's a little narrower than typical, so we know parking's a challenge in every neighborhood, so we tried not to be overly excessive, just trying to get some good visibility and allow smoother movements on those corners for the safety and the ability to get emergency vehicles and buses in and out of there. Consistent with the memo, there's still only been two responses, one positive, one negative. I think it's really the individual who's going to be most impacted, obviously, that has some concerns with some lost parking. But we stand by our recommendation to move forward with this proposal. This would be the introduction and I would make that recommendation to you and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Hamer?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler?
Mr. Hamer, just to clarify, too, this is only 225 feet from East River Road down. It's not the entire stretch of 89th Avenue.
Correct. It's 225 feet west of East River Road.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson?
That's short of Sycamore, isn't it?
Considerably short of Sycamore, yes. It goes about two properties up, two and a half-ish properties.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions of Mr. Hamer? All right, if there are no further questions, we will consider the ordinance restricting parking on 89th Avenue introduced and we will look at this at our next meeting, is that right?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodey's nodding. All right. Item 12 on our agenda is to consider appointment of election judges and approve the election judge salaries for special primary election for District 34B. Ms. Lenzmeyer, you want me to read this or what do you want me to do here?
I'll hit the highlights if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor.
There you go, I wish you would. Thank you.
Mayor and council, the request before you tonight is for an approval of the election judge list that's attached to the memo. Council is tasked with appointing those election judges and staff is requesting that you also authorize the city clerk to make substitutions and appoint election judges as deemed necessary during the days leading up to, happens next week already. And as I noted in the memo, we were under a time crunch because of the timing that we were dealt by the governor's issuing of the writ of special elections. So there will likely need to be a couple folks still added to the list. Okay? And then the other request is for the salaries to be set with, as they exist now or as we used last time, at $12 per hour for election judges, 13 for an assistant head judge and the head judge at $15 per hour. Student judges would be paid at the $12 per hour. Do you have any questions? I'll answer those. No?
All right. Any questions for Ms. Lenzmeyer?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Armstrong? You said we're too short right now? Is that as far as judges go or are we...
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Armstrong, we're close. I would like to have two more, just in case.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Anybody who's interested, let me know.
These are special individuals that do this. Yeah. We're very appreciative. Yes, yes.
Your honor.
Councilmember Novak?
I move that we approve the appointment of election judges as outlined on the attached list, that we first of all authorize the city clerk to do her usual excellent job in appointing and assigning election judges during the days preceding to the election if substitutions are necessary and approve an hourly salary for election judges at $12 per hour, assistant judges at $13 per hour, and head judges at $15 per hour, student judges at $12 per hour.
Second?
Motion by Novak and a second by Butler. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler?
I will reemphasize, thank you for signing up to do this. This is a great service to the community and we appreciate it very much.
Absolutely. It's an election we shouldn't have to have.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. We are up to open mic, public comment. If you are here for open mic, now's your time. Open mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda and the public is invited to express any concerns they may have which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Coon Rapids. Remarks will be limited to three minutes. Please approach the podium, state your name and address, and all remarks will be made from the podium addressed to the council. And you've got three minutes. Open mic is not a time for problem solving or reacting, but is that enough? Okay, go for it.
Good evening, Mayor Cook, council members and city council. My name is Elizabeth Betsy Kekefer at 12772 Swallow Street Northwest, Coon Rapids, 55448. And I just wanted to stop by tonight and thank all of you for sponsoring the Sustainability Garden Tour on July 19th this year. I was able to participate in it. I also did last year and I'm happy to report that there was an increase of almost double. I had like 30-some last year and over 50 this year. So a lot of people are very interested in native gardening and interested in finding out either how to get started or how to expand what they're already doing. So I just wanted to come and express my gratitude to all of you for having this, sponsoring this event, because it's a very important one, because we're losing our pollinators. And I've always been a flower gardener, but I started native gardening six years ago because of this reason. And that's how important I feel it is. And I just want to, just appreciate, want you to know that I appreciate you sponsoring it. So thank you.
Well, we appreciate you hosting that. That's a lot of people they have through your yard. Thank you. Anybody else here for open mic this evening? All right. Well, then we will close that portion. I do have a report on a previous open mic. At our last council meeting, Mr. Kurt Cole addressed the city council and explained there are three access points to his neighborhood along Northdale, none of which are traffic signal controlled intersections. He's concerned there have been several vehicle accidents and instances of unsafe driving behavior along Northdale Boulevard adjacent to his home and neighborhood and suggested signage and street lighting be reviewed by the city for this area to help improve traffic In late 2024 and early 2025, city engineering staff worked with the traffic engineering consultant firm SEH to conduct a corridor study of the city-owned and maintained section of Northdale Boulevard between Kirkland Lake Boulevard and Main Street. The study reviewed the Northdale Boulevard roadway corridor design and considered operational safety for both vehicle and pedestrian traffic. The report results are scheduled to be presented to the city council for consideration at a council work session in early September. So staff will be presenting the results and recommendations for the Northdale Boulevard corridor study to council at an early September work session and seek council's feedback and no other actions recommended at this time. So that was, that was good timing on its part. All right. That's the end of our regular agenda and we are up to other business.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson?
I mean, I'm just going to cover the, I mean, we've got 199 tomorrow, some of the other stuff we have coming up. The last concert in the park, concert at Coon Rapids Dam, is this Thursday, August 7th, 7 o'clock? It's The Revolution V, a Beatles tribute. Excellent, excellent. They're there pretty much every year. Great group. So 7 o'clock, no charge for parking on those nights. Concessions start at 5:30 with the Coon Rapids North Star Alliance. There'll also be concessions with the Scouts.
I would highly recommend riding your bicycle in that night. They are a very big draw.
They're great. And just since this is the last one, boy, thanks to the, thanks to the Arts Commission for hosting this. You know, it's sponsored by the Community Strength Foundation, but the Arts Commission is out there every Thursday night doing their thing. So are the North Star Alliance, so are the Scouts. Our Coon Rapids Police Reserves are out there as well. Just a great effort, just a great evening. So that's that one.
Yeah. What else you got?
199, we can go all night about that. Chief?
Tomorrow night.
Is that tomorrow, councilman?
I think so.
That's a very big day for us, as you're all aware. We're excited. Looks like we're going to have some great weather. We'll have dozens of officers out there and other staff. A lot of prep work goes into it, but it's always, it's always a great time and we're excited for it. So we'll see you out there tomorrow night. We'll have, I don't know how many, probably 30-plus additional officers out there and armed with swag and suckers and whatever with instructions not to bring any back, so.
I think we've got over, we've got over 100 parties, haven't we, again?
It is, just right around 100 and I think it might even be a couple more. There's always a couple of stragglers that we're happy to accommodate here at the last minute, but I think we're like 102 or 103, I think, this year, last I heard.
Such an important night around the city. You know, it is so great when you go there and people are meeting for the first time and they live right across the street from each other and, and then there's other neighbors, neighbors that have been, they've been doing this for years and years and you can just tell. Everybody knows everybody and they... knows everybody, and they watch each other's houses, and it's just, it's a great event. All right, other business?
One real quick, going all the darned to the top of the agenda again, I just want to put another shout-out for the military softball tournament, September twelfth through the fourteenth. If you haven't been to that yet, it's, it's great. It's, it's, I mean, great softball, you get great food, but you get to see a lot of the military veterans and their families and whatever else. I'm looking forward to it.
We got two more meetings to remind them about that. We just gave the liquor license today, so.
Yep.
Any other business to come before council?
Most do adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Butler, all in favor to adjourn, signify by saying aye. Aye. We adjourned.